Okay, the Brazos County Commissioners Court will open a workshop. It's October the 18th, 2021, 10:00 AM, Commissioners Courtroom, County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First order is called to order. Second is presentation by legal counsel of the draft illustrative plan. This redistricting the county commissioner precincts based recently on recently issued 2020 census data. Sid Falk.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. Pleased to be here. Most sporting events occur on the weekend in this community, but we have one here this morning. Is that Speaker on?
That is.
It doesn't. That better?
No.
No. Okay. Do I need to introduce myself again?
If you could.
I'm Sid Falk, I'm with the Austin Law Firm, Bickerstaff Heath Delgado Acosta. And we are pleased to be here again, helping you with the redistricting.
Sid, we can't, they're having a hard time hearing you. If you can get as close to that mic as possible, maybe we can pull it closer to you.
The other alternative is I can use my lecture voice.
There you go. That would be helpful.
So we're going to start this morning by looking very briefly at the existing commissioner precincts. Josh, if you'll pull up that. That's a real quick look at what they look like today before we've done anything to them. The table now, Josh. This is to remind you what the population situation is. This is the same table that we talked about last time in the initial assessment report. The ideal size is in the third column there, and if everybody had exactly the same number of people in their commissioner precincts, that's what they would look like. The second column shows the actual population. And so you'll see some of the precincts are overpopulated compared to the ideal size, precincts one and two. And precincts three and four are both underpopulated by comparable percentages, a little over 11 and a half percent. That means three and four need to have more territory and gain some people. And one and two need to lose some territory and population. In particular, one is substantially more overpopulated than two. So what we've done is take a first cut, a draft plan that corrects the population imbalance. Josh, if you go ahead and pull up Plan A. We're calling this Plan A. Josh, is that really Plan A? I don't see the.
Looks like it.
Yeah, it looks like it.
No. I'm looking at the top end of Precinct Four in the northeast there. And those two vertical elements aren't there, Josh, so this, are you sure this is not B?
Uh, let's see here, let me pull up the map for it, and there might have been change. Okay, so here's the original draft plan A, so you're correct. That must have gotten taken out, so I need to add that back in here.
Well, are you in Plan B, in Edge, or are you in Plan A?
No, but it says Plan A, so I'm not sure I have another one in here.
We did a lot of drawing, and so there.
Would you like to look at mine?
Sorry?
You have Plan A. Would this help?
No, he's got to pull up the right one so that we can draw from it.
Well, he had Plan A. That's what you wanted?
There we go.
That's Plan A.
Yeah, Sid, I'm comparing the differences on my two screens here. Looks like the only thing that's missing are these two pieces, so I can add those back in real quick so we can get the right starting point. Looking at. Let me bring in the original precinct lines here. Down on the block level real quick. And this will go back to the original, back to four. This will give the court a kind of brief overview of how the selection process works. So as I, you can see the selection box over here. As I add precinct blocks to it, you can see the total population. I'm not sure how this got included in Plan A. I must have been working in my sleep, but uh, we'll put this back over to Plan A. Find those selected. I believe this little portion was also, I think we had disregarded Plan A, but, because we had drawn this commissioner out on accident and went with Plan B. But just to bring that back over, so I think this gets us back to under 10% deviation here. Right now, two is underpopulated, so this went to two. There we go. Now we have a under 10% plan deviation.
Two is not underpopulated.
Two is not underpopulated. Three and four need to gain population.
Two is not, two's 2,500 over.
Uh, that is correct, from the original initial assessment. Looking at Plan A here, we have two as 5,500 people, but our target is 58. So we were at a minus 5% deviation of 3,000 people.
Okay, I'm sorry, you just made the statement that two was underpopulated, and I.
Boy, this is drawing out.
Without adjustment, it looks like it's underpopulated.
Yeah. Do we have a pointer?
Oh, we do, I'm sorry.
Do I could use?
It may not show up.
Yeah, probably not. It may not work. Yeah, okay, it's working. It was on the ceiling a second ago.
Josh, can you see the pointer?
Uh, no, I do not see the pointer.
Well, I was wondering if this area here could go to three.
Could we turn the camera feed towards the screen? Right now I have it.
This would be. West of Highway Six and. And I think University Drive.
I don't believe we can change the camera to the screen.
Okay, let me see.
South of University Drive and west of Highway Six, there's an area that's in two that could come to three.
Well, that's. That would, that's some of what he's trying to adjust.
There's, I believe it's Highway Six here.
Yes.
We are going to University, which is north of here. See if I can, trying to find University. I thought it was right around here.
Uh, you're too far north, come down south a little bit. Yes, 60, where you see Spring Loop? Come back over, come over west, yeah. Okay, now where your pointer is? Where you see Glen Haven?
There we go, Glen Haven.
Yeah, that area, if you could add that to three.
Uh, we, okay, looking at this whole area here, let me get a selection going.
Yeah.
Except for.
Move that to precinct three.
Okay, so I grabbed this whole election precinct, as you can see here, the voting precinct. A little bit of it is north of Highway Six. So we have a total of 3,700 people, and we're going to move this into three, is that correct? So let's see what that does here. Now we have in three, 6,300, 536 people.
63,000.
63,000. So that brought our deviation much higher, so we need to. I wonder if I could split this at the block level, and we can use Highway Six instead of doing it at the precinct level? We can see what that looks like, so I'll take everything north of Highway Six here.
It's all floodplain.
It's all floodplain.
There's nobody there.
Josh, I need for you to do something.
Sure.
Voting precinct 12, which is just northwest, now go north. No, didn't, don't zoom out, just see where the Commissioner three label is? Take that whole voting precinct and put it into three. That's what Plan A did. No? That, that one.
Let me, let me turn on the, I can turn on the labels for the voting precincts too. You're saying north of this?
No, west.
That's west.
See the green? That one, thank you.
We're putting this in three?
Yeah, that's what Plan A did. And then give back 24, which is that one. And then that isolated bit, labeled where the two is. That's, stays in two, and the thing immediately northwest, that goes into two. Zoom out just a little. Out.
Well, see, this whole area, it's just space, because.
I think we had this block right here split going into four. I think it might have even been both of these, this.
No, I need, I need for you to put precinct 36 back into two. Okay, now we've got some green coloration where your cursor is, and then right below that as well. Is that just map coloration and not district?
Yeah, so we got all this right here into three. And I'm thinking we had these parts here into four for Plan A. Looking at the map.
That's right, stayed in four.
University has to stay in three.
And the other thing that we had in four, right, that area.
Now she's looking a lot closer. I think that might be, that might be it.
All right, we still are missing one element between one and three to reproduce Plan A.
Oh, I think I see, it's, uh, looks like this guy.
It's 2818.
That's you. No, this is me in purple.
No, it's not that one. I, I think it's where the Commissioner one is labeled, we took the top portion of that area.
So, yeah, voting district or election precinct 31?
Not, not the whole precinct. Not the whole precinct.
Looking like. Trying to see what road we did, this kind of looks like it might be.
If I remember correctly, it was 2818. Was the dividing line. We took, we took the current boundary down from Southwest Parkway to 2818. And then to the west, the extension of 2818 out to where it goes to.
This current boundary?
No, not that one, the one north of that. Yeah, you got the one right there, the part where the one actually is, that's key, kind of keyholed up in there and surrounded. That's the one, where the intersection of 2154 and 2818 overpasses. To your left, on the current map.
I'm not seeing what that is.
See where, no, no, to, to, further to the west. That piece right there, that's in precinct one still.
I see. So it looks like.
Down to the intersection, the overpass of 2818 and 2154.
So we're talking about this whole area here?
Yes, sir. And then if the area in precinct three did not come down further to the south, southwest of 2818. When the, the bound, the boundary, this is currently Southwest Parkway of that area, came down to the southeast to 2818.
Okay, yep, I'm seeing it now.
This is 2818.
Same precinct, voting precinct 35 and 33.
This is 2818 right here. See it?
Yeah.
I don't know why I keep zooming out like that. So this section here goes to, not, let me select. All goes back to three.
Or, yeah, I mean, you can go to three or four, whichever you need the population in, because it's contiguous with both.
Yeah, it's voting precinct 35. Is that the voting precinct you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking specifically as much about the voting precinct as I am about the.
Well, they have to go by the voting precinct, because we're not changing voting precincts.
But in A, but in Plan A, that, that was the area.
Okay, it's in one. And you're giving it up.
It's currently one, well, it just makes more sense if that's the population. Precinct one needs to lose, to get the ideal approximately 5,500 population to precinct four, and 5,500 population to precinct three.
So if I understand this correctly, he's talking about moving 35 to precinct, is it two?
No, no, to you.
Well, one, one would not need to give anything to two, because two and one are both overpopulated.
So you're giving it to three.
If you look at precinct one, it's 11,000 over, and.
Well, as this is configured right now, it's in population balance.
Well, we're still, well, we're, we're still 10%, we're within the 10% parameter.
Yeah, we, we're within 10%.
I'm assuming that's what the 9.64 is.
How many people are in precinct 28, voting precinct 28?
Uh, let me see real quick.
That's, that's in precinct, currently in precinct one.
Oh, 28, where's 28 at?
To the, to the south and east.
Oh, I see it, there we go.
How many people are in 28?
On 28, we have 477 people.
Okay, well, the constable in precinct one wants to keep, keep that area of Peach Creek, and it's not very many people, so.
Yeah, no, I, I would agree with that.
Let me point out that the justice precinct plan is different than this plan, and it's not going to be changed when you change the commissioner precinct plan. So you don't need to account for all the considerations about constables and JPs in the commissioner plan, because the existing plan will stay in effect for justice precincts.
But the elected official does have to remain in the precinct that they elected.
We're not going to draw out any constables or JPs, because we're not changing that plan. And we're working carefully to keep all of you commissioners in your precincts. Now, we are going to draw the judge out.
Thank you.
No matter how we change the lines, yours is going to stay the same.
So if you look at the table down below the map, and notice the column labeled DEV, the sum of the biggest and smallest of those is less than 10%. This plan is in acceptable balance.
Correct. Is the objective to get to within acceptable balance, or is it for the next 10 years to be a little bit proactive, to take a look at where we see the areas of growth will be to hopefully keep them in balance?
From a compliance point of view, for the one person, one principle, being within the 10% is enough. Courts have typically held that you're not obligated to redistrict until the next census. So you can build in a little purposeful underpopulation in an area where you expect development to happen, so that 10 years from now, it might be a little easier to redraw, but you don't have to.
So Sid, if I see it correctly, you left precinct two exactly the same population wise, it's still 2,500 over.
I think that's correct, yes.
Okay.
4.42%.
Show me what you've done with what, what I'm going to call traditions, but out to, the part of precinct two that goes out to 47. Please show me that.
I'm sorry, which area is that?
To the west.
36, we'd be in that area of 36.
That's precinct 37.
It was for, last, this drawing.
Zoom out just a bit.
Precinct 36.
36, let's see if I can find. 36.
It's the bottom of that green peninsula.
Oh, there we go.
It's where, where's, where it says the number two, that's traditions right there.
That's, that's staying in two.
So it's unchanged.
So do you still want it?
I think it fits with two, better, better than four, to be honest with you.
I agree. I was, I was very happy to.
There's an area out that I'm going to call Tonkaway Lakes, but there's a little finger that goes off of three up there that makes no sense to me at all.
Except City Limits College Station.
There is a City Limits College Station, yeah. Yeah. Sid, one of the things that we've talked about was we've got one commissioner's precinct that does not have any county roads right now, and we're going to try to balance that out with adding a little bit of county road to.
Well, with the.
To three.
In the plan, you have county roads now.
You do?
All the way down, all of that's county road.
There's, for, south of.
Yellow.
Yeah, south of, I'm, it just seems strange to me to make such a very long line that divides precinct one and precinct three. The, and if you take a look at the bottom part of the area that's to the east of, that's going from precinct one to precinct three, there's, that, there's like minimal population there.
446 people.
It's like, no, it's even further south than that, Commissioner.
Well, it's the, it's the whole voting precinct, and we can't split voting precincts.
You've got to keep the voting precincts together.
It just, to me, there's, and there's no limited future growth there, because that's all Navisota floodline. Yeah. Got 28, precinct 28, yeah.
So Sid, if I understand it, it doesn't matter, because there's.
Well, 68 makes sense, because that's for future growth.
It doesn't affect the population. What we were trying to do is get Commissioner in precinct three some county roads. And according to the county road file that we got from the county, there are more county roads there than up. Yeah, up in that area there.
Well, and that makes sense, a southern point, southern points of area.
If you put 28 back in, precinct 28 back in precinct one, please. Voting district, uh, voting precinct 28 back in precinct one, please.
We'll have to take the southern piece as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that would, that's all that, that's all that precinct.
Yes, yeah, this is all one precinct, so that would be a good idea, so let's take.
Put that in precinct one.
Now we're back to what we had with those roads and.
Not, not quite.
No, I can, county roads.
In, in that area, that's where we, that's where the line is currently.
Well, and.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
There's no roads in three. When you draw that back out, you just took all the roads and plugged into three, back out of there.
You pick up, does it make sense to take, uh, that piece of two, precinct fifty-nine?
Fifty-nine, twenty-seven, yeah.
At least the bottom part of that makes it contiguous with the extension of, uh,
Fitch.
Fitch out to thirty.
What about in business?
Yeah.
Are we talking about just fifty-nine or also this little part here too? I guess this is one giant precinct here, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-seven is the.
Just, just put fifty-nine in with precinct one, uh, precinct three.
Fifty-nine, right here.
Mm-hmm, because this is county roads here.
Right. But I think fifty-nine is just okay.
Yeah.
Let's see.
I think it goes to here.
You see? You see? It's not, it's not, the, the greens do also.
Okay, so we're, so we're at nine percent now?
Is that precinct twenty-seven, the lower part?
Also the upper part.
That's what they were talking about the other day, Commissioner.
That goes all the way up.
To Steep Hollow.
Yeah, all, all the way up north, twenty-seven.
He's highlighted, he's highlighted it.
Okay, oh my goodness, that's one precinct twenty-seven.
It has forty-three hundred people in it.
Oh, and you live in that precinct, so, okay, wow.
What, what about the voting blocks in that? We actually had the precinct chair from twenty-seven come speak to us the other day.
Yeah.
And he was saying how it goes from Steep Hollow down to Tonkaway Lakes. If there's, is, is there census blocks in there that we might, uh, split twenty-seven?
You'll have to identify the area you're talking about, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with your map.
Okay.
There's twenty-seven.
Are we thinking everything south or north of eighty here, or is this thirty?
Thirty, thirty.
Everything south of thirty?
You putting that in my precinct?
We, we're trying.
Okay.
No, that's two right now.
Uh-huh. What does that do for the?
Now, yeah, I think that would go into three, would seem, that would add.
South, south of thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, so.
Then have this, uh, was this university?
That's university.
A Harvey?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Put this into three, and see what this looks like.
Oh, that'll put me way overpopulation wise, I think.
It should, I think it's a lot of.
That gets us to eight percent, if I'm looking at the tally on the left, on the right-hand side there. That's our eight percent deviation, small to large.
Yeah.
There we go, so now we have everything south of Highway thirty, going to Harvey Road here, now included into three. And that brought us down to an eight percent deviation.
And that gives there are some county roads, you're okay with that?
Would you want to do this in one? Uh, well, actually, it, it, on one way or the other, I think from a proactive perspective that that's where Southern Point is, it's a municipal utility district and there, uh, there, there's a lot of future growth in Southern Point, which will eventually be annexed into the city of College Station, that doesn't matter. But I mean, I, if we can look at that number and see where we are, but, uh, I think, you know, I think the thing about Southern Point is, is for precinct three, it represents a area of future growth to where we don't get as out of balance in the future.
Yeah.
Um, did you want me to take a look at that area?
Yeah, sixty, that would be precinct sixty-eight.
Okay, sixty-eight.
Southernmost tip.
Southernmost.
The one just north of twenty-eight.
Here we go.
Right there, yes, sir.
Uh, oh, yeah, it has zero population somehow, so, yeah, that shouldn't be a problem putting it in, uh, into three, was that?
Three.
Yeah, but I mean, that's it, okay.
Well, it's, it's in three right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, the way we've got it set now, that's just an area, there's what, eleven hundred, uh, single-family residences that will be there by the time that's all built out.
Something like that.
So you're comfortable leaving it like this?
Uh, leaving it in precinct.
Well, I, I think from a, looking at the long-term perspective, over the next ten years, it, uh, gives a growth area to precinct, it gives a growth area to precinct three without it is not there. One, one way or the other. That's, that's currently census listed as zero?
That's correct.
Wow, okay.
Twenty-four down.
Probably. Look at twenty-four, Josh.
Precinct twenty-four.
Yeah, if we're going to straighten some lines up, that would help.
It's, it's up in the northeast part of, of three.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
It's around thirty-four and twelve, it's been.
That's it.
Yeah, that's it, I think there's going to be a lot of people in that.
Uh, three thousand seven hundred and sixty-two.
That's too much, okay.
That's going to put you out of balance, I'd have to. Do we have, do we have any pre, voting precincts that are over five thousand that we need to address?
Yes.
I have not looked at that.
We do.
Okay, and, and we need to address, the, I think in the, in the planning, we need to address the precincts that are over five thousand because those are mandated to be changed. How long can they, five thousand's the maximum you can have in a voting precinct? Where you're supposed to have?
Yes.
Trudy?
Trudy, where, which precincts have more than five thousand?
I got, uh, on the screen now, um, the total population of each voting precinct, so, um, let me turn on, I can turn this on and the VTD number, or the election precinct number, right now I just have, just so it's easier to see on the map. So we can see here, we have, uh, over five thousand, we have seven thousand. And, uh, this precinct, we also have six thousand, so just kind of scroll on around and see how many we have that are over five thousand. Uh, I'm assuming it should, it looks like it's only here in the south, or I mean, in the downtown area. Got the, uh, was this the Traditions Club area, uh, kind of by the campus? And, and a couple spots here, and I think that's it, that's over five thousand, I don't see anything else.
So should I take Traditions back with that help?
Oh, no, that, that was a lie, we got some in precinct one or two.
Goes the wrong way.
Lowest number, so, how about if we took?
Yeah, so we have quite a few of them that actually have, uh, over five thousand, let's see.
You don't need it now.
Yeah, Commissioner Berry, you know, I, I, I'm thinking about, that's an area of future growth out there, but to be honest with you, it's a, a triangle of, uh, Rock Prairie, all of the midtown College Station development out there, that's going to be a lot of growth too. Are we, if we put the, um, Southern Point, Mud into three, is that going to put growth in three? MAC is, three, it, I mean, uh, the, uh, that, that part's already in, inside the triangle there is already in, but there's a lot of residential development that's going to be happening.
And that's okay.
In that triangle, okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
Were there any other areas that you guys wanted to look at specifically?
What were those precincts?
We have two, thirty-five, sixty-nine, sixty-three, they're all over, but we have a lot that are right on the border. But you have to realize, and those are voter registration numbers, those are not population numbers, so.
Tw- what's twenty-seven?
Uh, twenty-seven. Oh, here's twenty-seven.
Uh, thirty-six.
So twenty-seven is, uh, four thousand three hundred and forty-one people, and this is that very large, uh, oh, but we split this one already, so I need to, do we? Let me clear that out. So we split twenty-seven by Highway thirty, which is good that we stayed by, uh, uh, you know, major road boundary. Would you like to know what, what's left in twenty-seven up here, or do we just want to make sure it's under five thousand?
Twenty-seven, it's staying, it's staying in precinct two.
Yes, ma'am. I was trying to get the numbers on it, what part?
Yeah, what, what, I, just, just for numbers purposes and data, uh, what would the remainder of twenty-seven that is in precinct two actually encompass population wise?
Okay, uh, let me try and get to this boundary here.
Yeah, where it would be thirty-six and thirty-seven.
What's the voting, uh, the, the population of precinct thirty-six? Please, Josh?
Yeah, let me, where's thirty-six, uh, and I'll come back to twenty-seven here.
In thirty-six?
Thirty-six, the population is, uh, seven thousand two hundred and fifty-five. That is this whole area here. And let me go find out the rest of twenty-seven here. Still in two.
Twenty-seven.
Worth of here, let's see. We're looking about thirty-six hundred people.
That's still left after we've assumed the Highway thirty.
There's a few more. Yes, so, uh, this is the, what's left in, in two, is, uh, thirty-eight hundred.
So, so with what we have on the map now, what is the under ideal for four and three?
This is too much, we still have to give some more, it's heavily complicated.
In four, about twenty-seven hundred, almost twenty-eight hundred people.
Under, okay.
And which, and which other?
Uh, three.
Only about one hundred and forty-eight off ideal.
I mean, one hundred and forty-eight, okay. So four would be the under, four would be the under and one would still be the over, the, the differential of, of that eight percent between the two.
Steve, repeat your question.
Well, I was just looking at where we were with the current configuration, where we would be relative to ideal and one would still be over by about the amount that four is under, correct?
No, it's slightly changed.
No, I mean, with the current configuration, what were you saying those numbers were? Four is still twenty-five, twenty-eight hundred under?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And, and one is still?
Eighteen.
Almost nineteen hundred.
Oh, nineteen hundred, okay.
Yeah, I thought you were talking about two.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Well, two has a lot of, they can, oh, yeah.
So that eight percent, the difference, that eight percent difference is, is still between one and four?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's possible.
Yeah.
It's sufficient.
It is.
Which makes it not bad.
So you're going to send us this map?
If, if this is where you were all settled, yes.
I don't think we're settled.
We're not settled, but, but, we, we'd like to take a look at it.
Four.
I should have said settled for today.
Settle for today, yeah.
Four looks good.
We're at a functional starting point.
Yeah.
No change.
Would be my opinion.
Yeah.
A little cleaning up, but no changes, no big changes.
And, but would be interested in hearing the comments from people too.
Yeah, we'll do that next week and then we can do our final redraw.
I think if we could get a map that shows us where we are today.
We got it, yes.
I think that would be good.
We got a little geographic information, so is everybody okay with this one as our tentative for today?
Yeah, and you're going to send this to us?
I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Megan, when we get this new map, would you draw us a big one of it?
You cannot steal Megan.
No, we're not stealing Megan, we're just.
Megan is my jewel.
She's the jewel of the county.
I am claiming that jewel, of course, and her office is in precinct four, so she's large.
For the moment, she's in four.
So, and, and when the crown jewels come off, we will look seek their availability. Save this as Plan C.
Okay.
Yes, it's good to move larger now because I can see anything to make a difference.
Okay, so, um, we need to convene. Yes, we will move to number four and convene an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one to consult with an attorney about pending or contem- litigation and our settlement offer. And, counselor, we need, of course, commissioners and, sure, do we have an executive session? I mean, I mean, it's on the agenda.
I, I don't know that there's a, I think we kept that open.
Just in case. Okay, so we don't. Okay. That being the case, then we will move on to, uh, number six and adjourn. Thank you all.
Thank you all.